Maybe they'll look at that.
Everybody ready for listen up? Call the meeting to order if you join us in the pledge, please. Mr. Stewart, do you want to lead it today?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, good morning. First thing on our agenda is fairly lengthy, the consent agenda. As minutes from July seventeenth and eighteenth, payroll approval, vouchers approval. Approve and chair to sign catering permits for the Irma Hotel Elkhorn Bar and Grill, Wild West Brewing Company. Proven allow chair to sign catering permit for Wild West Brewing Company on a separate occasion. Approve and sign Willwood Irrigation Certificate, approve and allow chair to sign search and rescue resolution dealing with Wyoming Retirement. Approve and allow chair to sign Park County Agreement F twenty-two with Dust Busters for C Mac. And approve and allow chair to sign MOU between Park County and the City of Cody on the septic facility. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution for this search and rescue is twenty twenty-three forty-six.
Okay. Okay, and we'll give Kim a couple more minutes. I know he was gathering his paperwork. Show me your name. And I want to go.
Oh, wait till it gets there.
That's what I'm doing, man.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, I think we can keep moving. It's not a public hearing, so we will move on to Kim Delvin, Jenny. The Planning and Zoning Department Cross Ranch Simple Subdivision Number three oh seven final flat.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this project is Baltazar Rodriguez. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Cody Powell Rule. We did get an application for final plat review from Mindy Keel, who is actually the property owner. On July sixth, we received a revised final plat on July seventh. That's what you see in figure one. The applicant requests approval of this final plat. It will be a one lot, simple subdivision. The lot will be fifteen acres in size. For residential and ag use, it will have, it will leave a remainder parcel of almost sixty-five acres. It'll be sixty-four point nine acres. And again, in figure one, you see the copy of that final plat. The location of this property, that's shown in figure two. It's about three miles northeast of Powell. It's of course, north of Highway fourteen A. It's on the northeast corner of County Road six and County Lane six, that intersection. Neighboring land use, you can see in figure three that neighboring land uses are a combination of residential agriculture and residential vacant lots. The Powell Country Club Golf Course is just a little bit to the southeast of this property. This property is not within a mile of City of Powell, so municipal view is not required. Turn to site characteristics. Proposed lot one is vacant, currently not irrigated. However, irrigation water rights do exist on the property. And you can see in figure four that the topography shows that there is just little changes in elevation, moderate changes in elevation going to north section of the proposed lot. I mentioned that this is in the GRP zoning district. This lot size is proposed as consistent with that zoning district. We have bottom of page four of our staff report, the notice of intent to subdivide was published. That happened in April of this year. That was in the Powell Tribune. That's consistent with our regs. We notified agencies as required. Of course, we have a list. We are required to notify. We notify others who we feel may have an interest. Powell Clerks, Powell Clerks for Conservation District, they submitted a SOALs report as required and a cover letter. Five SOAL types exist on the property. We have those listed bottom of page five. SOAL types are primarily related, rated somewhat limited for dwellings without basements, somewhat limited to very limited for dwellings with basements. And these SOAL types are primarily very limited regarding drain fields. Park County Fire District Number one responded. They said they could provide fire protection. Northwestern Water District, they responded. They said at this moment, at this time, service from them is not available. MDU responded, they have natural gas service available from an existing gas main at that intersection of Road six and Lane six. Of course, this is a simple, so utilities being stubbed or adjacent, they're not required. TCT responded, they said they can provide service, internet, phone. And they said those services not guaranteed. Park County School District one responded, they will provide school bus service if that's necessary. Postal Service responded, they said that they can provide service and the placement of mailboxes will be determined when new residences are, or should this be approved. Weeden Pass Mary responded, she did initial inspection. She found Russian nap weed. And she said a long-term noxious weed management plan will be required. Our understanding is we've not received that yet. Is that true? Is that your?
Yeah.
So no weed plants, yeah, no weed plant's been received yet. And I think we've addressed that in one of our recommended conditions for you to, should you approve this. Garden Light and Power, they responded, they have power running down the west side of the property, and they said they have the capacity to serve the subdivision if it's approved. DQ responded with their typical responses, should there, should permits be necessary. Park County Treasurer stated property taxes are paid in full. Game and Fish responded, they have no terrestrial wildlife concerns, but they offered their standard subdivision recommendations. Public Works responded, emailed dated in May. And they said that they confirmed that Road six and Lane six are both Park County Road right-ofways. Road S or Road four S situated on the east side of the remaining parcel. That was vacated, they said, in nineteen seventy-seven. Another email, Park County or Public Works noted that Road six is scheduled for major improvements coming up. They also said, Public Works said, any improvements within the right-of-way of either Road six or Lane six, of course, will require a right-of-way permit. Addressing also will require a permit. Public Works also recommends that the developer abandon an apparent private access that is evidently being used at the intersection. And they, Public Works suggested that locations along Road six be used instead. Shishone Irrigation District. So no comments have been received. However, we did get a water distribution plan signed by them and submitted by the applicant, and that occurred in May. Madam Chair, we've not received any public comments. There were a number of conditions that came from planning and zoning. And planning and zoning recommended approval of the sketch plan at their meeting in May of this year. Some of their conditions, we have listed bottom of page seven. Number two had to do with basically a response from Public Works, so that condition has been met. Their condition number three was in regard to a long-term weed management plan. That condition has not been met. Number four was an approved water distribution plan. That condition has been met. Number five was proposed water wells show up on the final plat. That condition has been met. Number six, water analysis was conducted, or I'm sorry, no water analysis was conducted. And so availability and quality of potable water is unknown. Systems may be required. That condition has been met, so that condition is on the final plat. Required. If I remember correctly, that there was no ability to get a water sample from a well within a half mile of this lot. It's that condition. And Northwestern Water was not available. Then number seven was the Wyoming right to farm and ranch act. That conditions met that statements on the planet. Final plat committee looked at this on July sixth of this year. There were some minor changes and corrections. As I mentioned, we did get a revised final plat on July seventh. That is in figure one. So the rest of the bottom of page A are basically submissions and requirements for what goes on the final plat and what needs to be submitted with it. I will mention that a subdivision improvements agreement is not required because there's no improvements. We have a number of different findings, Madam Chair. We recommend approval of the final plat of the Cross Ranch Simple Subdivision with the following conditions. One is the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities and special districts, irrigation districts, or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. But in no case shall such utility easement be less than twenty feet width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. Our second recommended condition is the applicant shall provide an approved long-term noxious weed management plan to Park County Planning and Zoning Department prior to final plat reporting. And then number three of our recommended conditions, the applicant should otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen five three oh six. We're happy to answer questions. Should you have any?
Questions or stuff?
Um, just the, I said in the plat, the cisterns may be required and most likely will be required, as close out there. I mean, just, just a question on the water issues that are out there. I know the golf course struggles with that with their cisterns. Maybe David, you might know, is Northwest Water thinking of maybe expanding in that direction at any time soon?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have talked to the head of the Water District, you know, and, and the Chair as well. And they said they have applied for the funds. Funds appear to be coming. Now, this is just what they told me directly because I have another subdivision. I've been working up to there too. And they said that hopefully those would be available, you know, the work would be done hopefully in two thousand, potentially twenty-four, twenty-five. But there will be taps or try, they are expanding that. They're going to do it from the, the O'Donnell side. And then it was back feed all the way to Garland, which is where this is right here. And it does run in the road there, so. I, I would say, yes, I would hope, we're all hoping, you know, these from the real estate side, you know, there will be finding some more apps coming in that direction. Yeah, yeah.
Dave Reeds.
Yeah. And, and you, Madam Chair.
Dave Reeds. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, and as you probably remember, Madam Chair and Commissioner Mangle, that, so that statement we have, that's just a requirement, should someone be unable to get a water sample from a nearby well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Concerns? Your thoughts?
Good, good, Madam Chair.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the simple subdivision, Cross Ranch Simple Subdivision final plat as presented. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Twenty twenty-three forty-seven.
You expecting anybody on this next one?
No, I don't know.
Someone from EA.
From EA, yeah, maybe.
I'll give it a couple minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're running a little ahead of time.
Here, Madam Chair, Nick is from EA's here.
Coming. Hurry up, hurry up.
Yeah, we're early. We're so efficient.
Yeah, he's not Cody Johnson. I think we can get going on our, our next agenda item, which again is our planning and zoning staff with the Townsend Simple Subdivision Number three oh eight final plat.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant and the property owner for this project is Lydia Moore. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Cody Powell Rule. We did receive an application from Ms. Moore July of this year, including payment, final plat, other documents. We received a revised final plat for this subdivision on July twenty-fourth. That's figure one. So you had a chance to see that. The applicant requests approval of this final plat. It will be a one lot subdivision. The lot size is three point nine five acres. It will be for residential and agricultural use. And should this be approved, it will result in a remainder parcel of ninety-three point eight five acres. You see, the location is shown in figure four. This property is four miles approximately southeast of Powell. It's on the south side of Highway two ninety-five. Does have an address of five eight four, the property, the lot where the buildings are, five eight four Lane thirteen. Neighboring land use, that's shown in figure three. Neighboring land uses are agricultural to the north, east, and south. There are some pure recc lands on the west boundary. There are some residential, residential vacant lands in the area. And there also, there are some subdivisions in the area, primarily north and, or maybe only north and northwest of proposed lot one. And again, that's shown in the neighborhood land use is shown in figure three. Site characteristics. Proposed lot one is developed, it does have a residence, some other buildings. It does have a septic system and a cistern. Buildings and septic system are not permitted. They're pre-existing, so they existed prior to our current county regulation requirements. Figure four shows a topo map. Topography has little change in elevation. There is the Willwood Canal just south of the proposed lot. This proposed subdivision is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required. The lot size as proposed is consistent with the GRP zoning district where it is located. Notice of intent to subdivide was published in the Powell Tribune. That occurred in, on May eleventh and May eighteenth, of course, meeting our, our notice requirements. We notified a number of agencies. You see the list and their responses. MDU responded stating the residence is currently served by them with the main that runs along that state highway. Again, this is a simple, so utilities are not required. Park County Fire District one said they could provide fire protection. TCT said they could provide service, internet, and phone. We did get a, a cover letter and a SOALs report from Powell Clerks for Conservation District, which is a requirement. There are two SOAL types on the property. And one is rated not limited for dwellings without basements. And also rated somewhat limited for dwellings with basements. The other SOAL type is rated very limited for dwellings with or without basements. And both SOAL types are rated very limited for drain fields, Madam Chair. We didn't get a response from Willwood. They said an updated just water distribution plan will not be needed because there's one that already exists. In another email from Willwood Irrigation District, they said they see no problem with the proposed subdivision. All easements and irrigation will remain the same. They said they would like the applicant to form a water association for the shared headgate. And then we did get another email correspondence from Willwood Irrigation District, and they did provide a water master acceptance, acceptance by Lydia Moore. And so in that, according to that, sketch plan review, condition number two from P and Z has been met. DQ responded with their, their standard letter. We did get a response from YDOT. They said the existing access to the house is permitted as a residential access. Game and Fish responded, have no terrestrial wildlife comments. Again, they have subdivision recommendations. Park County Treasurer said that property taxes are paid in full. Postal Service said they can provide the delivery of mail and placement of mailboxes will be determined when the new residents are ready for mail delivery. Of course, I imagine this is one lot. There's probably already a mailbox, so you understand that. Park County School District one said they can provide school bus service if that's necessary. Willwood Light and Power responded, they said this lot is within their district and they provide power to lot one. Weeden Pass Mary responded, she did initial inspection. As a result, she said a long-term noxious weed management plan will not be required, but she does recommend the applicant follow best management practices. Public Works responded. They said the lot has legal access from State Highway two ninety-five, direct frontage. They said YDOT should be consulting. Of course, they were. Why not confirm Lydia, Ms. Moore does have access. And Public Works said they don't have any concerns with drainage and erosion control. We've not received any public comments. So this was before planning and zoning. On, on June twenty-first, they recommended approval. They had a number of conditions. Their second condition was language. Their second condition was language regarding Willwood Irrigation District and Water Association. That condition has been met. Their third condition was a note on the final plat due to slow percolation rates. Engineered small wastewater systems may be required. That condition has been met. Number four again was the fact that no water analysis was conducted. So availability, quality of potable water unknown, systems may be required. That condition has been met. Number five was a regarding a noxious weed management plan. That condition has been met. Number six was a response from Public Works. That condition has been met. Number seven, recommended conditions from P and Z was. A note on water wells. That condition has been met. Their eighth recommended condition was. The Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. That condition has been met. Plat Review Committee looked at this final plat on July twenty-fourth. They had some, some minor corrections and changes. And then we did get a, a revised final plat, and that was on July twenty-four, same day. That was in figure one. You had a chance to see that. We had a number of findings. That, um, for your consideration that you had a chance to look at, we recommend approval of this, um. Of a final plat of Townsend Simple Subdivision three oh eight. We have two recommended conditions. One is. The applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities and special districts. Irrigation districts or public agencies providing services. The width of any utilities shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. But in no case shall such utilities be less than twenty feet width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. And then our second recommended condition was. The applicant should otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth the Wilmington statute eighteen five three oh six. Madam Chair, we're happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? No questions? The pleasure of the board.
About Chair move to approve the Townsend Simple Subdivision final plat. The staff report recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Um, Townsend Simple Subdivision number three oh eight final plat with recommendations. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Resolution.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
And Mrs. EA also.
Are we expecting them? Then we can. I still like to change them too far.
Filling this. Ten ninety-nine that, or W nine that Steve wanted, can you send that back down with you or? Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think this had to be with that.
The Caligard, yeah.
They got that new Caligard up there.
Did they?
Eighteen footer.
It's the one I sold him?
No, it's a pipeline.
I guess.
I was up there checking on some. I seen him come and grow.
You can look through and see those places on the bottom. On the bottom, there's a line that needs to have Park County Commissioners.
Packing those archaeologists out tomorrow.
I think there's four of them.
I got Ash, Scott Ash is gonna come up.
Yeah, that river kind of blew out last night. It was fine when I went there more dark this morning. But it wasn't running that high, you know? And that road going in.
Coming back in.
Oh, to, the, yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Well, they, this, they went in and fixed it. They crawled that trap.
No, no, they didn't do a very good job. There's all that cobble.
Okay, I think we'll keep moving. Um, the next thing on our agenda is, um, again, our planning and zoning staff, uh, Kim and Jenny. Ando Farms Simple Subdivision number three oh five final plat.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this is Shalise Cook for, and from Endo Farms. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is both Cody Powell Rule and Powell. So this actually property, this part, this property has a planning area on. One to the west and then a different planning area to the east. We did receive an application for the final plat review. Signed by the property owner, June of this year, including payment, final plat, other documents. Then we received a revised final plat on July twenty-fourth. And that's what you see in figure one. So the requested action, of course, is approve this final plat. It is a one lot, simple subdivision. The lot size will be two point four one acres. It'll be for residential use. And it is coming from an existing seventy-one point nine four acre parcel, so there will be a remaining parcel. Um, and you see that again, that's shown in figure one. As I mentioned, this is, this has two different planning areas. So the eastern, the eastern portion of lot one. Is in the Powell planning area and the western portion of lot one is in the Cody Powell Rule planning area. Creation of the subdivision again will result in the remaining parcel. That'll be sixty-nine point five three acres. Location is shown in figure two. This property is approximately two miles west of Powell. It's north of, of Highway fourteen A. It's on the north side of County Lane ten. The lot, the proposal lot one does have an address that's twelve sixty-seven lane ten. You can see in figure three, the neighboring land uses. Those are primarily agriculture and residential. In terms of site characteristics, proposal one is developed. It does have an, an uninhabited. Residence and it does have some outbuildings. There are no building permits or small wastewater permits on record. And shown on figure four, it shows the topography has, um, is relatively flat, little change in elevation. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so municipal review is not required. Notice of intent, of course, those are required for any subdivision. They were in the Palt Tribune on March seventh and March fourteenth. The lot size as proposed is consistent with this zoning district, which is GRP. Agency referrals. We notified a number of agencies, including the ones that are required. We got, we received a number of responses back. First of all, MDU responded. They said in a letter. They have natural gas service available. They talked about a service line. And a main, of course, again, a simple subdivision. Utilities are not required to be stubbed. They have made adjacent. Fire Protection District One responded. They said they could provide fire protection. TCT responded. They could provide service, internet and phone service. We did receive a cover letter and a soils report from the Powell Clerksport Conservation District. They said there are four soil types that exist on the property. And, and you saw at, in the middle of page six, we basically, um, summarize. What any of those, um, ratings are and any, um. I guess any reason for why they're rated a certain way. We did get a response back from Park County School District One. They said they could provide bus service. Should that be necessary? Postal Service said they will provide mail. Mailboxes to be determined. Should they be necessary? Garden Light and Powers said they currently serve the property. And they could provide service to this simple subdivision. However, they said that the, the service should be upgraded. Should service be necessary in the future? DQ responded with their letter. Our County Treasurer said, uh, property taxes are paid in full. Game and Fish responded. They have no terrestrial wildlife concerns. They had, they offered their standard subdivision recommendations. Weenpest responded. Mary did an initial inspection. She found Canadian thistle and showing milkweed. However, she said that because the, the landowners have no plans to develop the lot. She, Mary will not require a long-term weed management plan. She does recommend that the property owners follow best management practices. Public Works responded. They said proposal one has legal access from lane ten, direct frontage. They reiterated that to their knowledge, no new subdivision roads are proposed. We understand that to be true. They said the developed lot should be addressed in accordance with their standards. Should any new structures or dwellings be proposed? They said the proposal one does have two existing addresses. A right-of-way permit application needs to be submitted to Public Works, they said, for any new accesses. And they also said. Proposal one has two existing access approaches to lane ten. Public Works said a drainage and erosion control plan will not be required. We did get a response from Shoshone Irrigation District. They said they will need two hard copies of the water distribution plan to sign. And then at the end of June of this year, we did get a copy of an approved water distribution plan. From Shoshone. We've not received any public comments. Planning and zoning, um, reviewed this simple subdivision sketch plan. On April nineteenth of this year, they recommended approval. Some of their conditions, number two. Was a response from Public Works. That condition has been met. Their third recommended condition was a water distribution plan. That condition has been met. Their fourth condition. Revolve, um, was a note on the final plat. Talking about engineered septic systems may be required due to high groundwater. That condition has been met. Their fifth recommended condition was regarding water wells. Permitted by the State Engineers Office, a note on the final plat. That condition has been met. Their sixth recommended condition was a condition on the final plat, talking about accesses. Shall meet Roden Bridge standards and will require right-of-way permits. That condition has been met. Seventh recommended condition was that the applicant either provide a shared maintenance agreement. Between the parcel owners who use the shared driveway. To be recorded with the final plat. Or the applicant shall place a note on the final plat and state in a notarized disclosure statement. How maintenance of the shared driveway will be achieved by the property owners. That condition has been met. So you will notice, Madam Chair, there is a driveway going through this proposed lot. That serves lot one. It serves the remaining parcel and it serves several property owners. Essentially to the northwest. Is that correct?
Mr. Dillon, on our copy of number, for number seven condition, it says condition not met.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that condition has not been met.
That's all right. I just want to be sure we had the correct information.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, we have concerns about any kind of road maintenance. Trying to prevent problems in the future. And then, Madam Chair, P and Z's recommended condition number eight was about the Wyoming right, right to farm and ranch act. That condition has been met. The plat review, the review committee looked at this final plat. On June twenty-sixth of this year, there were some, uh, corrections and changes made. Then we did get a corrected version or revised version in July of this year. Which you saw in figure one, those changes, corrections, uh, were made. Bottom of page eight of our staff report, we have submissions for final plant reveal. Just mentioned that. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required because to our knowledge there will be no improvements. We have again a number of, of findings of fact. And our recommendation is approval of this final plat. It is the Ando Farms Simple Subdivision three oh five. We have three recommended conditions. One is the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities. And special districts, irrigation districts or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. But in no case shall such utilities be less than twenty feet width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. App, number two of our recommended conditions is that the applicant shall provide a shared maintenance agreement. Between the parcel owners who will use the shared driveway. To be recorded with the final plat. And then our third recommended condition is the applicant should otherwise comply with standards. In the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth. In Wilmington statute eighteen five three oh six. And we're happy to answer questions.
Madam Chair, just a question. I probably should have asked this a long time ago. A shared maintenance agreement, is that a lawyer's? Or is it one that we can download from the county website or how does a shared maintenance agreement work?
Yeah, um, Commissioner Mango, Madam Chair, yeah, I, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be incredibly detailed. I don't think it requires an attorney. And it essentially is. A agreement about how these different people using, in this case, this driveway through lot one. How they will share any maintenance that's required and snow removal.
We recommend that they seek to the advice of an attorney. That's the best, but, but it's not required by our regulations.
So, um. What happens when you have a homeowner or parcel owners that choose not to enter into this agreement? And we're requiring that they come up with one. I, I think we're stepping a little bit out of line on. On requiring maintenance agreement. That's a civil issue between neighboring landowners as far as I can see.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Livingston, my understanding is, you're absolutely right. This involves. Um, some property owners who are not part, who are not this applicant. However, it also involves property owners of lot one and what be, will be the remaining parcel. Uh, yeah, we, we cannot compel those other lot owners to participate in this. You're absolutely right.
But you're asking.
Well, or, or perhaps it would be between the property owners that of, that will be lot one and the remaining parcel.
If I understand what you're saying correctly, we'll have two lot owners there, the, the little lot and the remaining parcel. But you're saying it also affects some other landowners that use that road.
And, and we can't compel them to participate, but it certainly would be nice if they would join. This maintenance agreement.
Um, Mr. Hummel? Nick Hummel with EA.
Uh, Nick, I'll interview associates, um, in this particular, uh, project. Those other lots that we are speaking of are also owned by. The development of the, of the. You got three siblings. That, you know, they each have a house that goes through lot one that is up there as well. So you got both siblings. The remainder parcel is just farmland that they plan to sell and then lot one of seven. So it is all family members that we are dealing with, with the road maintenance agreement. And there has been a draft. Um, that they are gonna review and they are all agreeing with it. So in this particular instance.
They all work good with.
And Madam Chair, I have no problem with, with that. I just, the language of it just says. Between the parcel owners who will use the shared driveway. It might have to be defined a little clearer that it's parcel owners of the subdivision, because if there are others. And I'm, I don't know if there are other landowners that could be using this driveway and you're requiring that they would. By this, this language that they get agreement from all of them. I just. Just wanted to add a little bit of a hiccup on that one.
I agree. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, um. Kim, in your second condition is just requiring a road maintenance agreement. However, other. Uh, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was an option of, uh, uh, a notarized disclosure showing a easement. And, uh, would it satisfy the staff? If we reworded condition two to either. And, uh, would it satisfy the staff if we reworded condition two to either of those? Or, or even just a notarized disclosure showing an easement access to the additional lot owners. You know what I'm saying?
I, I mean, you didn't include that possibility of just putting on the final plaque that there is a, a notarized disclosure of an easement through that property for the access to the properties. That, to me, would satisfy, you're not landlocking other partials that are currently using those accesses. It just sort of, we have, we have road maintenance.
But I think there's two different things. The easement allows them to go through, which should be on the plat, but the other is a maintenance agreement saying that the guy that owns the land isn't gonna be responsible for plowing or graveling the whole thing if everybody's using it. So I think they are two different things.
Yeah, I think we had asked that they, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I think, I think we had asked that they either, either state on the, on the plat or disclosure statement, um, how maintenance is gonna be shared. Just, you know, a general statement that it's gonna be shared equally or whatnot, or that they enter into a shared.
But in the, in the staff manager, under the staff recommendation, doesn't say that. It just says a road maintenance agreement.
True.
Yeah, so I, I think between that, I think we learned that they, they were all entering into an agreement. So we just stated that, but it could be, it could be changed.
And, and absolutely. And, and I mean, Madam Chair, I think, Commissioner Teal, I think the, the road maintenance agreement, to me, it's, I think it has stronger language. And it, and now, I didn't know this, but now it sounds like we, we do have an agreement that everyone who uses a road is willing to, to sign on, sign up.
Any other questions for staff concerned? Question?
No.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to find on, on the plat itself. You're saying there is language about addressing the access?
Um, I think there's, so there's an, a new, Nick may need to help with this one, but I think there's actually a new, there's an existing roadway and easement um, on the plat and on the, um, on the west side. And then there's a new easement that's going to the remainder parcels. Is that correct, Nick?
The, uh, I guess there's two questions. Um, were you asking about where it says about the road maintenance agreement? It'll be under the associated documents. Um, is where that, uh, document number that'll be recorded, be put on the plat.
Yeah.
From the far right there.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, Commissioner Teal, that, so that road maintenance agreement, after it's signed, that it will be recorded, and then that recordation number will, that will be, have a place for that on the final plat.
But Commissioner Teal, were you asking about the easement itself?
I'm seeing it now.
Okay.
You know, okay.
I have to blow it up big.
I did too.
Here, can't see.
See, we're looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is there.
It is tiny, the plots are tiny on here, I have to admit. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Moved to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve Ando Farm Simple Subdivision number three oh five final plat with staff recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Bring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post? Okay, motion passes. Resolution two oh two three forty-nine. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, thanks, Nick. We're on break for a little while, about fifteen minutes, yeah.
Um, that building, steel building?
Yeah.
Is not going to Trail Creek Ranch.
It, it's not going to Trail Creek?
No.
Is it going to the shooting?
I haven't heard that from Tiger.
Okay.
Laid it all the way down to that.
Drug ranch.
Why is.
Oh, it's almost like.
I appreciate, I think I'm the only one that traveled down there, checked my cows for a month. Cause I've walked pretty close on tire tracks and that sand it looked up pretty good. That way I can. Follow them because there's a lot of gates that people can leave open out there, you know, and others. I don't know what your traffic count. There are a few picking up now because the river dropped and a lot more rafters.
We can get going with the next thing on our agenda, which is some Ben McDonald, project manager from our public works department. Those open statement of qualifications for the F Y twenty three tap project, the North Powell. Bike and pedestrian facilities improvements.
We never seen no other.
Okay. So. Previously, we had gone. Out with the request for a statement of qualifications and separate cost proposals. We received one, which was from engineering associates. Here in Cody and the state asked us to go back out for two additional weeks to advertise and see if there was any other interest. Um, because of the federal requirements, um, we'd have to have a pretty good reason to just select somebody with nobody else. So. Anyways, we went back out for two weeks. Um, we did have some calls and stuff, but apparently. Nobody wanted to bite, so.
One quick question on the notice that we have on the computer in front of us. It does talk about at the regular meeting of the board of county commissioners on Tuesday, August eighth.
Yeah, which this, this is fine. I actually told Whiteout about the.
Okay.
The date stuff, because I always pick the wrong date when I tell them when I'm doing these, you know, you got.
Right, Tuesdays. Yeah, okay. As long as everybody understood.
Everything's good as long as we're, um. Have our advertisement periods and have a public opening of it. So.
Okay.
With that, I can open this from engineering associates, but, um, really, we're not really looking at the cost proposal today.
That's what I was gonna ask you, wait, wait on that, tell them why not.
Yep, yeah, we'll wait on the cost proposal, but, um, basically since they're the only submittal. Um, we will just move to accept them and begin, um. The process with wide out to, to get confirmation from them and get going with design.
Okay.
And, and on that note, um, I had talked to them. They didn't, did not resubmit. This is their original submittal.
Okay.
Um, so there will be stuff in here. Um, I talked a while about this as well, but there will be stuff in this. Um, as far as deadlines and stuff like that, or, you know, project. The estimated schedule and stuff when they start and all that is going to be delayed at least two or three weeks.
Just because of this advertising period. Okay.
So.
What type, what do you need from us today?
Um, I think I can open it and say that we opened it and then basically we. Um, we would recommend that we select engineering associates for the design for this.
Yeah, chairman, like any, uh, what you would, I would say move to award the contract to the A that will have to. Uh, work on an agreement that why not.
Okay. Okay.
Question, pending approval of Y dot and the county attorney.
Right, right.
Which, um, yeah, that should go pretty quickly. They already have one from their original when they did the. The scoping stuff, so. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? What you want, much pleasure.
And Madam Chair, I moved to the private transmission cap program, F Y twenty three for county. North Powell bicycle pedestrian facility improvement. Getting it all out. Uh, pending Y dots review and county attorney's review, approve and approve. And allow the chair to sign.
I put something they're saying you can award the contract.
I'll, I'll second that. I'm not gonna repeat it.
It's been moved and seconded. To, uh. Sort of, um, award, award the contract to engineering associates for the. F Y twenty three tap project contingent on Y dot, uh, review and approval on the county attorney approval.
Allow the chair to sign.
And allow the chair to sign. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
He's gonna start doing like what I do, just say.
Let Colleen write the damn motion.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda, um. Is USDA Forest Service and State Parks M O U, North Zone Snowmobile Trail Management. Um, this agreement is normally has been in the past redone every three years. There has been a little bit of discussion about some different work. So. Um, Brian, if you want to bring us up to speed on the thought processes right now.
Well, thanks, Madam Chair. Um, so as everybody knows, we, uh, the county. Agreed several years ago to plow the section of the, uh, bare teeth highway from the junction to Pilot Creek and then the Pilot Creek. Um, snowmobile area, parking area, and we've done that for several years. And like you said, we renew that contract. So the language that's proposed is basically the same as it's been, just basically a renewal. Cause I think they aren't actually inspired in April, I believe, but. Um, so there's that. And then we've had some discussions, uh. Uh, Pete with Y dot and then, uh, bird on the, from the snowmobile's club about. Uh, what it would be, what it would take and would the county be interested in participating in? Uh, plowing from the junction up to it's about a mile and ever.
Yes.
To that, uh, restroom area. It's past the fall, past the bridge and the fall there. And, uh, you know, maybe it's a combined effort with Y dot and, uh. You know, ourselves, Bert indicated maybe they might have some funding possibility. And Chip's talked to, uh, our guy up there, he gives some comments on. On things he said, basically right now it takes. Uh, when you get a pretty good snow, it takes Sam about twelve hours.
Twelve to fifteen.
Twelve to fifteen to do the, the highway and the, and the parking lot. So, so he's playing catch up after that. So if he did it, it would kind of be, if he could get to it, you know, it. It'd be the last of the layers probably.
Right now, um, under the three parts that the county does, you talked about west to Pilot Creek and you talked about the. The trailhead. It also says plow the, the road and shoulder on two ninety six at US two twelve junctions east. For the turnaround to provide some parking. It's so how far east are we on now? Do you know?
Just, uh.
Not a little bit past the where the barricaded that bird.
The sign there.
He's talking about so east of the junction right now, he plows a little ways up just to, to just pass the.
Eagle is, uh. Up and as the U turn turns down like the visual, did you get that?
I did, I said.
So that, that's the intersection.
Okay, but we already do a little bit.
We do a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And I think we, Ben, it would measure was about a mile from where we end. To, to there.
But we haven't had any conversations with Y dot about. Kind of maybe testing this and seeing what works.
Discussions with Pete, you know, we were, we were together in the hall basically and, and he indicated that, um. You know, keep them plugged in that they would. You know, consider helping us out, or even up on it.
So are you in favor of us updating the current agreement that we have and then maybe looking at this as a. Test or a trial situation to see what it takes or what kind of a snow year we have to. See if it worked.
That's Bert and I talked about that. I think that's kind of what Chip and I were thinking too.
What Sam told me is our heavy snow year that would be tough to do.
Okay, okay. Mr. Miller.
As visiting with Brian on this, on this, it's just one of the things, it's a thought of moving it up. Uh, so that we get the congestion out of the parking area. The picture that you guys said, that was just an average day, you can see that we're all the way up. If we have a holiday weekend or anything where it's the nicer snow. Uh, we get down into the intersections and that's kind of having a little bit of a concern. Um, visiting, we were on a field trip about three weeks ago with Casey and Kristen. Uh, looking at Pilot Creek and then we went up and looked at this area and he was very much in favor. Uh, see if you can work this out. Uh, just like Brian said, I also talked to Pete with the highway department. He asked what, how they could help. So he's kind of opened that door, how they could help. One of the things he said is we could run the truck up. Go through the U turn and come back down. Um, and, uh, he's, and then maybe Sam can do some cleanup. We also talked to Forest Commune State Trails. He was on that field trip and with our groomer. Uh, up in the U turn area, there needs to be some cleanup because we walked that cat all the way from Pilot Creek up. It's rubber, rubber track. So then they would help out, you know, kind of do a cleanup. One of the nice things that if we can make this work, it would be a pilot program. Uh, is the factor that we were able to relieve the congestion in the intersection, but we also can get people up close to the back. Uh, it's a great facility for a bathroom, but you're down below and, you know, some of the folks that have some handicaps or even ladies. Would appreciate that if we made it work. We also, when you look at this stretch down here, uh, in the fall. That's all sun, so it does, it doesn't melt. The trail stays on this other side. So it would be a great, uh, I think we got enough park that we could help to make it, make it work and. So without the buses, yeah.
Thoughts?
Madam Chair, um, Bert, I'm not a snowmobiler. I, I do, but. My, my question, certainly have you thought about, you know, in the, in. Possible low snow conditions where you're talking about, there's not a lot of parking up there at the. At the torch fork overlook where the bathroom is. So the, the, and there may be room along the edge somewhere for travel until you get to the bridge. So if you plow across that bridge, your snowmobile's going to be able to cross the bridge to access. You know, if you park down below.
Right.
And you plowed up above, then are you cutting yourself off?
Well, what you look at is when you, when this is gonna be plowed, we're not, we're not gonna be plowing this whole road while. There's a path up and about a half a path coming down. And then state trails will take care of that trail that actually goes kind of along the ditch to get up to the connector. So, uh. I think it's very feasible. The bridge does hold snow. Um, so it also gives people the, if they, if they decide to table, want to park a little bit lower, what's that Willie Lake turn offs where they're. They can park that and we're just trying to pull it up. Uh, to where we ease that congestion.
My concern is that Chip or our operator understand that they have to leave snow on the bridge, right?
Which would be to the left going up. I mean, one of the things we look at so that you guys know, maybe, uh, when we start the season out. We start up at the bathrooms as a U turn. And we will use that until we get enough snow to come all the way down. And usually we start our grooming, uh, December first. Uh, so if we don't have a lot of snow, we leave it up there. That U turns up there, same kind of idea being down the U turn. Um, until we get it ourselves. Then, then in the fall, when mother nature says, okay, we're gonna melt this. We move the U turn on back up to the bathrooms and the beacon checkers and stuff are up there. So we're kind of moving back and forth. This will probably eliminate moving and there's only the, really that one stretch that's about. Three hundred yards as you go up where you can kind of drift over there a little bit. Uh, the rest of the time during the season, there's really probably only. Maybe if we're lucky, compacted ten, twelve inches on that, in that area.
Okay. So where are we at?
Madam Chair, just a question, the restrooms are maintained. You're around now, that's not what it is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Madam Chairman, uh, the parks are, the forest service, Kate and Brett and crew, they do try and. Look at, but it's also a partnership with the local club, the Kentucky National Association. We watch those bathrooms for them. We maintain on top, we get. Photo papers to take care of that bathroom. And then there's us, that are directors. As we go up and back, we'll pull in, jump out, look. Uh, there's also a shovel there in case, case the doors are difficult. So there's a great partnership with. You know, there's a lot of us that are gonna be able to help with this.
As far as the added costs, I suppose, would that be determined by us or Y dot?
I think that, I, Brian, I need your input there a little bit on what, uh, if we're looking at some additional cost fuel wise, time wise. What's the combination there that we use?
Well, the, the thing that Chip and I've talked about is, you know, if, if it gets really bad and they have to bring people up for Cody. Or equipment, that's kind of, that's tough on, on our end of it. So. I think what sound like we might be willing to do would be to say we try it a year. And to see what, what it takes. And then, and we'll get with Pete with Y dot, see what kind of a.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe Sam and their person that does that area, they're talking.
Okay.
And they work together and.
See what happens.
Yeah, we just try it. But to me too, it's gotta be. That's probably the last thing we did, if that makes sense. That would be the last because. Main thing is to get the county roads open. Then the, then the pilot and then we do that last.
Oh, yeah.
That makes sense.
We, we all know that, and I feel phone calls all the time when we get out of, we put, um. Uh, people are calling, I, I just got stuck in Pilot Creek and so on and so forth. I explained to them, you know. Our, our concern is getting people in and out. That's a recreation. That comes third, fourth, fifth. So we don't have any, any problems.
Okay.
And I, you know. To add to this, this. If it works, I've talked to Casey about, or the stretch past the bathroom there, it would be. You know, several hundred yards and we talked about if it worked and it would work for everybody. We would look at putting in a, get a grant, putting in a bigger U turn. Maybe the forest service use it for something else or so on, to where it would balance a little bit.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one advantage to this would be is you get up to where there's enough snow, you maybe can build a big enough burn for the people with GPS and don't try to cross it.
Yeah, that's possible. Um, okay. So if I understand this correctly, we're looking at approving the current. M O U that we have in front of us, which is identical to what we've done in the past. And then this would be just a trial workout that you all will work on working out this winter and see how it goes. And if it works, we'll know more next year. And if it doesn't work, we'll know that too.
And we'll keep track of our costs.
Okay. Everybody.
Madam Chair, I, I agree. I don't know if it needs to be in the form of the motion about, and I would like to. To make sure that we're not, Sam, overtime, just to. Do that addition.
On the hard end, we do pay.
Yeah, we, we do anyways sometimes. It's, it just, you know how.
Well, I know, but if he, if he's already on overtime just to get pilot to fulfill the contract, that's one thing. But if he has to spend another two hours. Doing that, I know, I mean, it could wait until the next.
Yeah.
Time. Opportunity.
Yeah, his, his.
That much, no, it's not gonna be an issue.
Well, and Commissioner, that's, that's where we're, that's where we're also gonna be talking to Pete and Y dot. I mean, he. He made that commitment that they could, they could go up and down. Uh, he can get to the U turn with a big cloud come, but he can't go up there in clean.
Clean.
You know, and Sam can help there or state trails with the cat in as they go up. Uh, can clean out that area, make it nicer. So.
Okay, well, let's. It's the pleasure of the board as far as approving the current contract in front of us or M O U in front of us, um, as we have in the past. Let's deal with that first.
Madam Chair, move to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current requested, um, memorandum of understanding. For snow removal, um, Pilot Creek and US two twelve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and then I guess direction, we're okay with them running this as a test for a year without any additional overtime and see how it goes. Is everybody on board with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're out.
I think.
Yeah, somebody.
Yeah, hands is in between you.
Should be quick though.
Okay. And the next thing on our agenda, we'll go ahead and move up, Mr. Odie, if you'd like to come forward. Um, First Deputy Park County Clerk. Regarding a full-size SUV bid openings for clerk and treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, this is the, uh. Vehicle that you approved in the twenty twenty four budget, uh, for the clerks and treasurers. We expect out a, uh, twenty twenty-three gas four-wheel drive, um, SUV. Full-size, full-size SUV. Uh, did get bids from both, uh, Danny Menhold, here in Cody, and Fremont Motors, also here in Cody. Uh, open. Menhold bid first. Madam Chairman, the, um, Danny Menhold bid is signed. Um, exception page. Has some additions, MF MCD, total skid plates. Owned not a bit, not. Perceptions, um. Their bid package looks to be in order, five point three V eight, uh, twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe LS four by four. Detail, they've got their certificate from Y dot. Everything appears to be in order, their total bid is fifty-eight thousand seven six nine, fifty-eight thousand seven sixty-nine.
Did we request delivery date information?
The delivery date, uh, yes, we did, scheduled delivery date on that order entry, September nine, twenty twenty-three. Um, so this would be, looks like this would be an order, not a vehicle. Mr. Miller is here today, provide some additional information of your like, I suppose, Madam Chair.
I'm just checking to see if we included that, so we would have.
Yeah, so that's an order entry, so.
Okay.
They, it looks like they do not have any available at this time, so that would be an order item.
He's shaking his head yes, so that's the understanding, okay. It's not.
Next bid is from, uh, Fremont Motors. Bid, no exceptions. Bidding Ford Expedition Max. Quarantine information. Signed and delivered, and both these, uh, again, both these were delivered on time to clerk's office. Uh, so the Expedition Max, uh, from Fremont Motors. Four-wheel drive. Total net bid of sixty-five, five ninety-eight. Six five, five nine eight. Uh, delivery scheduled date, ninety to three hundred and sixty-five days, they were not allowed manufacturer delays early, uh, so they would have to order it as well. Um, so neither, neither item is on the line at this time. So, um. Madam Chairman, uh, obviously as the board, you have the, the ability to accept or reject all bids. Um, the bidders all know that. Um, you could accept a bid and wait for an item to come in, uh, or you could reject all the bids, and we could rebid for a used model. Or something that, uh, you know, I, I, I don't know what we could do, but, um, that's, I think. You need to talk to the, to the electeds of that department, of the departments of this.
This vehicle was predominantly to be used, well, at this point, because of our HVAC move in getting staff. Powell every day, both clerk and treasurer, um, combination purchase for the two offices. What, uh, if in fact, and Bert, I, I don't know the ability to absolutely guarantee it'd be here in time, and, and I know that that's almost impossible for you to do, but. I just wondered what their thought with processes would be, or what you think, is it fifty fifty, is it better than fifty fifty to get it here on time, or?
Well, Madam Chair, uh. We don't really have a deadline on this, so, uh, if, if I was kind of looking at this, this, these orders are, they're going to go away, they'll get called late too. Which is in September, and there it will achieve a bill date and so on, so it could be four to five months after that. The reason is because we will start as these move forward, and we will start looking into the holiday season, and that slows down. Um, as far as looking at something used on the lot, um, you're not going to find anything that's an LS version or so, you're going to find them really loaded. Um, and you're going to be in the seventy thousand dollars, maybe high seventies.
Thanks.
I think we, we will do as best as we can, I think. I'm hoping that we proved, proved our track better, uh, we achieved our goal of getting the four sheriff's vehicles. Before like competitors can deliver the original one. There is a lot of problems with seat rails. I don't know whether you guys have run into that. Uh, the sheriff's vehicle sat three months waiting to get on a rail. And I'll do my very best to get this in time.
Um, what kind of a alternative plan would the two of you have? If, if we were to move forward with this, what would be your plan until we could get the vehicle?
We'd have to borrow one from the assessor.
Assessor, okay.
Right, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, they, they have one available for all of that time period. Otherwise, we'll be paying our one employee wage.
And we're looking at five days a week now, not just once every two weeks.
And for six or seven months, that really add up on someone's vehicle.
Any other thoughts for yet?
Kind of a question, um, looking at our budget, it shows. Uh, equipment and furniture, and how is, I'm assuming you split it between the treasurer and clerk, and it looks like we budgeted approximately seventy, is that correct?
Right.
So we are within our budget here.
And I think it all was in the clerk's line, I don't know.
I didn't know if there was any, if, anything, it doesn't itemize.
Right, that's correct. That's correct, but it is in the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, Matt, Madam Chairman, uh, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So. Could I ask Bert a question?
Yes.
So, um. In looking at your used, you're saying you only have upper class, nothing, a little bit more.
Most of those are going to be like high countries, the valleys, so, um. Are, you said your budget's right around seventy, so I was going to push that. Um, I, I think some of these. Uh, I just did receive one that said twenty. The one or twenty twenty-two, it, it maybe it will come in on that budget with about. Under that budget, about ten thousand miles. But it, it will be nice, leather. All, all the, all the bells will ring, but if it is a, but it is a urgent need, uh, I will be happy to look at our inventory and. If you go on what you possibly.
Um, you made the comment that this order wouldn't go in until September, is that correct?
Yes.
Would we have time to look around for the next two weeks and make a final decision at our next regular meeting, um, to see if there's. A possibility of this use situation before we make a determination on this?
Yeah.
Do we want to do that?
Well, I think, Madam Chair, that I, I do caution is, um. It is basically a buyer's market right now, so what is on the ground right now, I, um. If I, one or two that I have in mind, if I was to bring them back, uh, we would, you know, you'd need a, a decision rather quick, because they're sitting on the lot in the region.
I guess I wasn't thinking about that purchase, I was thinking about whether we hold off on accepting this bid or not. What's, what do you guys think?
Well, and one question I have is if we go with any of the used, how about warranties and stuff?
Right.
You know, is it worth it to go used if we're not, if we don't have warranties? And all of that, it's just something to think about, yeah.
That's Chair, your warranty on who did hold depends, it hits a fleet, it's a county, uh, it runs a three-year thirty-six thousand mile voluntary bumper. But you actually have a five-year hundred thousand mile power grid, which the retail market.
Commissioner.
Um, Madam Chair, I think for, if we're looking at difference between fifty-eight thousand and seventy thousand, we can pay a lot of mileage. For waiting for that vehicle.
Yeah, that's true. Um, so our choices would be down to, to moving forward with this, if that's what you choose, and then looking at either a borrow or a mileage until we get the vehicle. Is what you're.
That would, I mean, I would leave it as a very discretion, but that would be something I would look at.
Okay.
You find.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Just a, a question, I guess for staff, I mean, if we're four months out. And you can't get this vehicle for four months. I mean, it's not really a big emergency then, or it's not needed, or you could always borrow the assessor's vehicle to begin with?
Madam Chair, remember, um, Commissioner Randall, the other thing we're looking at is this will be a vehicle that will be, we will use for elections as well. And that's why we needed a oversized SUV, not like a terrain. Um, the election equipment will not fit in the terrain, and we'll be doing train maintenance, and so anything that the assessor's office also has. Will not hold my election equipment. So that was the other reason we came to you, uh, to, to ask for the purchase of a vehicle that would actually hold our election equipment also.
What are you using right now?
What do we use right now? Hands picked up and we pray that the weather's good.
Got crappy pickup hat?
Just so it doesn't get wet.
Oh.
In the back.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, um. The difference between the fifty-eight thousand and seventy thousand. We can travel three hundred and forty-two trips back and forth to Powell. And, and still be even, so.
As long as you have an employee that's willing to use their vehicle.
Warrant.
As long as you have an employee that's willing to use their vehicle. Does not all want to put that kind of miles on their vehicle for work purposes.
Running clerks, I'm sure, and it's our running clerks, yeah.
It is a, it is a discussion, so.
I think we should just order.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to accept a bid from Danny Manhold for the Tahoe. You don't want me to give you any details? Call it, it'll fill in the blanks.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the bid from Danny Manhold for the Tahoe at fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, can be delivered ASAP. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Madam Chairman, thank you, Lord, thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bert.
Thank you. Okay, the last thing on our agenda is, um, Brian Edwards, County Engineer, Public Works Department. Consider the purchase options for a used bulldozer for the road and bridge department. Um. You provided us with the information on what you have found when we asked you to maybe look for an old or used, not old, but used. Um, because of the cost of these things, um, and you did find something, so if you want to go over that.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair, as you recall, we, we did put in our budget this year, uh. The, uh, an amount for a, basically to replace our existing D six dozer in the Cody Road Bridge Crew. Uh, with a, with a, something bigger, and so we looked at something in that D seven size, which is about sixty, sixty-five thousand pounds. Somewhere in that range, and, uh. We reached out to, uh. The guys at, uh, Haunted, and, uh, uh, TV force got, got there, we've been working with them, modern machinery, Titan. And we looked at all the different models, uh, both didn't have anything of that size like the, the Kubota. Uh, it's bigger machines, so they don't really have anything of that class. And then, uh, uh, John Deere did come back with a new dozer for six hundred and fifty thousand. Which is not a, not a bad deal, uh, what were we talking about that, it was.
Sixty-five to seventy.
Yeah, it's, it's heavy, that's the problem with the John Deere is it gets up there in that, uh, past the seventy. Thousand pound rates that we have to do something different with the transportation. So. Anyways, after looking around as a machinery trader and whatnot, uh, the other thing we got into and talking with both, uh, the John Deere and the cat dealer, you get into. Uh, what's used ones, loyals can, can attest to that, you know, if you get one from like, uh, the mining or the, uh. Lanceville or forestry or any of those, they're beat up pretty bad, or they get used pretty hard, and so you really don't know exactly what you're getting, and so if you're not in that. You know, two years old, it's a bit of a gamble, because it's this size machine, like Chip said, it's a production type machine, and so they get, they get used pretty, pretty good, but this. Particularly one, the owner bought it and some other equipment, used it, and do a little bit of work on his place, but now it's up, been a sap for about two years. And it's basically due three hundred hours, those newer, over eight hundred thousands. Eight hundred fifty thousand, and, uh, the, this one here, like, it's got three hundred hours, light new. Uh, and, you know, we're. Wanted Chip and his guys to go look at it this week, so we haven't actually seen it, but he was going to go with the, the cat dealer. Thursday, is it?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay, okay, so. That's what we'd like to do, is if that, if it checks out, I think that's a machine that'll do everything we need, and then, uh, last, past Martin Chip's retirement. It'll be a good machine.
Commissioner.
Uh, Madam Chair. I think it's a great deal, um, and that definitely is farther, much better in the long run. My concern is our procurement policy, have we, uh, because, do we. I, you helped put that together, so I mean, is there some formality that we need to go through to make sure that we follow that? Um, or we have a loophole in there that we can use?
Madam Chair, if I could, that, that really is not addressed in our procurement policy about purchase of used equipment like that. That's part of why I checked with Dossia, we wanted to bring it into you in open session here like this, is we did reach out or. Basically told everybody, what did I say, every three or four years or, or newer, and to anybody I could find that were the dealers. And gave them the opportunity to show us what you got. And then we thought we'd bring in the best deal, but we did, you know, showed.
Yeah, right.
So, so I think.
But because of the purchase price, they were supposed to advertise, I mean. And I mean, as, as long as you're comfortable with, so I don't want anybody come back and say, well, my God, I didn't.
I, I guess my thought on it is, is we. We looked at all the advertising sites, I guess, you know, somebody might have one in their backyard, and we, you know, but. I, I feel like we did a lot of due diligence to see what's out there, and they're not abundant, there's not a lot of. Man, so. I, I, I feel like we're good.
Okay.
Think any of that.
Well, you, you, you wrote it down.
But it is something we ought to think about down the road, is, is, was something we get into that, I feel like the one you got, you know, if you do a used.
Hmm.
Used vehicle, it's hard to compare apples and apples.
I didn't know that our procurement policy singled out used or new.
It doesn't really address it, it doesn't.
It was more of a dollar amount, that's.
You guys, the process, and I think you could wave whatever informalities and whatever, it, it's, to me, it's a matter. Are we getting the best value for? Are we giving the best value for the for the citizens? And I feel like we didn't do it just there.
Madam Chair, I I do believe that they, what they found is is very good with my experience and heavy equipment. My question earlier to you, and that's why Chip is here, is justify why you need a seven over a six. There's a lot more options out there at six.
Yeah, um, so we get, we just in the Cody area, our pits are really rocky, um, like the North Pit and the Martin Pit. And it's a struggle a lot of times with that six. And then like this seven RP project, that seven would. You know, it's just got a bigger ripper setup, and that's the main reason. That ripper on that six, it's more of a finished dozer and. I've been running dozers since I was a kid, I've been around them and I know them. And I've actually run a seven just like that and. It just from my experience, I think we'd be way better off in the Cody. And then uh, we did um, run the John Deere over at the Powell landfill, and I didn't realize they had such a rocky. Situation over there and I told Brian, I said, you know, if we're not using it and Edmund needs it, he could dang sure we'd haul it over. Cause they, the the only field, the only covered earth they have left is something that. We had the John Deere in and I know our six would not touch it.
Well, I'm not a fan of John Deere, I just doubt it driven at me.
Yeah, and you know, I'm.
I guess my point, I don't want, and you you have as much or more experience than I do, so if you say the seven is what you need is. I I'll go with that. I just, sometimes you. You get too big a machine and actually shoot yourself a foot on more projects that you.
Go and haul it without a bunch of work on our transport trailer, and I I really don't. Feel like I want to do that.
But other other thing, Madam Chair, is we'll still have. Um, we we want want to offer it, because they're giving, it sounds like our price on our used one's a lot more than what we thought. So um, we're talking whether landfill buys it for it, plus plus we do have another six out there, right? Yes, so we will have one if we needed it to be finished or something. This is mainly mass pushes there. Move things out of the way.
Mr. McDonald.
I want to add add one little thing about. The need for a larger machine that we see a little bit with what we've got going with the excavators. Um, in the Cody district, we have a lot of things coming up, like potentially the Jbar nine pit. Um, trying to get some stuff done on Corral Creek.
Sure.
Um, having, we have a few different sized machines, one in Cody on Powell, they use. The machine a lot more in Cody for the the bigger pushing stuff, but. Um, it makes a lot of sense to not have the same one in both districts, in my opinion, excavators, dozers. Um, it comes in handy if you got the big guy, um. Where you can jump in, we do a lot of river work, emergency repairs. I really don't think it's a bad idea to go up a little bit. Sorry, in my opinion.
Anything else for the commissioners? What do you want to do?
I believe, Madam Chair, that that our staff recommendation, they seem to be experts and they seem to need a tool that is. That is needed, so I would say approval to go ahead and look at that gap.
Appreciate that.
And with approval, go ahead and buy it at that, okay?
Yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, with forty, also, you you know, I guess continued on, they're gonna go look at it and with the chat guy, they're gonna go through it. So if there's anything that red flags, we can pull the plug, so.
Yeah, that's, so the motion would be purchase contingent on the review with. Yes.
I just wanna, just for, this is all within the budget.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. You'll keep us updated.
Yep, we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, is there any other business?
Move to a adjourn.
Second.
How come he hears that? All those in favor?
Hey, Dossia, if you got a second, um, I just got a text back from. Who is saying?